Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 9th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. If you can please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To you in all who worship one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shannon, can we have roll call, please?
Messina.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Mandell.
Here.
Rumppler.
Ward.
Here.
Okay, great. And can everyone hear me out in the audience? Yes? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve. We have two sets of minutes. The first set would be February 28th on our 2019 workshop.
Move approval of February 28th workshop minutes, please.
Have a motion, need a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we have a motion to approve the March 12th, 2019?
So move.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we also have elections for the Chair and Vice Chair, so...
Mr. Chair, in recognition of the outstanding job that our current Chairman is doing on this Planning and Zoning Commission, it is my honor to nominate you, Tom Messina, as our Chair.
I guess I have a nomination for myself.
You have a second.
And I have a second.
Move nominations be closed?
Thank you very much. And do we need a vote or just a roll call on it? And if we can please have a roll call on my vote, Shannon, please?
Fleming?
Aye.
Ingalls?
Aye.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Mandell?
Aye.
Ward?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I like doing this on Tuesday evenings, and...
Mr. Chairman, in light of Mr. Ingalls' wonderful motion, well thought through, well considered, and well spoken, I would nominate him for Vice Chair.
Thank you. I have a motion for Mr. Ingalls of being our Vice Chair.
Second.
I have a second. Shannon, roll call? Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes, yes.
Mandell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Ingalls. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the Commissioners, actually. Thank you for all your time that you spend with us. At this time, we can have public comments, and these comments would be on anything other than the few items we have on our agenda tonight, so if anyone wishes to make a public comment other than those items, please come on up. Not seeing anyone? Thank you. And staff comments?
Good evening, Commissioners. Just a few updates. So for May, we have an annexation request and a special use permit. We were going to have the annexation this evening, but it made more sense because they're tied together to bring them to you at the May meeting. Wanted to thank you for participating in the Atlas Workshop last week. Great discussion. We, I've received, I think, almost everyone's comments on, and feedback and questions for the Walsh Comer GGLO team. I'll forward those on, and then we will schedule another workshop to focus just on that. So thank you, very thoughtful feedback, great questions, great suggestions, so we are excited to see that move forward with the preliminary development standards. And then just some updates for Midtown. I don't know if you've been following any of the discussions, but there will be a pilot project for a resident-only parking permit program, and that's going to be on portions of Montana, Reed, and Roosevelt, and that will go into effect in a couple weeks. We're sending out letters this week to the homes that are within the boundary of the pilot project, and then once we have 66% participation per block, so each block would, if you get 66%, then that block could get the signage and go into effect, so keep you updated on that. We're going to test it and report back to Council within six months, and it's up to a year to see how well it's working, or if there's any issues. And then another update on Midtown, there's going to be a construction project starting on April 15th. So that is the intersection of Fourth and Roosevelt, so they're going to be reconstructing that, and then also installing those pedestrian-activated rectangular rapid-flashing beacons at Roosevelt and at Montana. So exciting things in Midtown.
Okay.
That's it, thanks.
Hillary, can you give us any new information on our updating of comp plan, any projections on where we shoot with that?
Yes, so our selection team had reviewed the four proposals. We had some great ones. Thank you, Chairman, for being part of that team, so we are moving forward to kind of figure out if we can get to a contract negotiation, so look into the scope and working with the preferred firm at this point.
Great, appreciate it.
We'll report back as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Right now, we have an administrative item. The applicant is Lance Douglas to request a one-year extension for SP-1-17, an R-34 density increase special use permit. The address is 2772 West Celtes Way. Okay, go ahead.
Hello again. So yes, this is an administrative request. This is for extending the special use permit for this triangular parcel here on Celtes Way. It's about three acres. And the reason for this extension request is that the owner of this property, Lance Douglas, has been in the discussions with the city, as you are well aware, for doing a land trade, and so that has delayed him from taking any action on this subject property, and so he is requesting once again for a one-year extension. This is allowed in our code. There's no cap on how many requests you can make, and from the city's perspective, this makes a lot of sense, since we have been working with them, and there are still some discussions and interest in seeing if it's possible to make that land trade happen. So the same conditions would apply. There are the five conditions in your staff report. The first one, although, has really been satisfied with the construction and revitalization of Celtes Way, and then the other ones would still come into effect, and so your alternatives this evening are to grant the one-year extension with those same conditions, or you may by motion deny the extension request. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for Hillary? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
This item, extension of planning commission approval for SP-1-17, density increase to R-34 for proposed multifamily apartment complex in the C-17 commercial district, our decision being that with the following conditions, water and wastewater follow through with the original proposal, that we should grant one additional year extension of the Atlas Mill Development Corporation for the approved SUP to allow for additional time to come to mutually agreeable terms with the city on a possible land swap, or likely going forward or not going forward with this project. So I think we should grant this one-year extension.
Okay. Have a motion by Fleming?
Second.
I have a second. Roll call, Shannon?
Okay. Fleming?
Aye.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Mandell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. The extension for this particular item has been approved. Thank you. Before I get into our public hearings, are there any comments the Commissioners would like to make, and if they have any conflict of interest on any of the items that we have for us tonight? Oh, okay. Also, before I hand it over to Mike, there is a sign-up sheet for each one of these items. If you would want to sign up, if you wish to or not to speak on either one of these items, please indicate so, because I will be giving those sheets, and if you, I'll call out your name, and if you wish to speak, you'll come up. You'll have a few minutes to express your view on that particular item. Also, the applicant will come up after Mike gets done giving us a staff presentation. The applicant will have a few minutes to discuss the project, and then public testimony will be given, and then the applicant will come back up again and answer any questions that might have come up during the public comments that were made. And then we'll go into, I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll go into our discussion and voting on that particular item. So if you can make sure you sign on to the right form, that would be very helpful, and sign your name, so I can read it clearly, and I apologize right now if I mispronounce some of your names, which I'm known to do. So anyway, with that, go right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
This is a public hearing for item SP-1-19. Application by Ben Widmeyer, represented by Architects Miller-Stauffer Architects. Requesting a special use permit to allow density increase to R-34 that will allow mixed-use development with commercial units located on the first floor and 43 residential multifamily units located above the commercial units. Properties located immediately west of the intersection of Government Way and Spruce Avenue. Legal notice was published in the Coeur d'Alene Press on March 23rd, 2019, and all other required notifications have been made. Here's a location map of the property here. You can see it highlighted here in red. This is Government Way. This is Ironwood. This is Cutney Medical Health Facility. This is Ironwood Square Shops and Retail Area, and the property is located here, highlighted in red. Here's a close-up aerial photograph of the property. This is Government Way. This is an arterial road. This is West Mill Avenue, Davidson, and this is Spruce. Properties located, comprises of six individual parcels, however, the applicant will need to combine these when the project is ready to be built. The applicant is also proposing to front-load the building and have the building located close to Government Way with parking located in the rear. Here's a site plan indicating how that is going to be put together. Here's the front of the building. This is Government Way. This is Davidson, and this is Mill Avenue. This is the parking lot, and this is the planting strip that they propose between the parking lot and the neighbors to the west. Here's the proposed building elevation. This is just a mock-up of what they're showing, what it's going to look like. This is Government Way. There are three findings that need to be met in order for a special use permit to be approved. Finding B-8A, B-8B, and B-8C. The first finding is B-8A, that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan indicates that this is in the Appleway North Fourth Street area, and it's located in the green area, which is transitioned, which the character of the neighborhoods are in transition, and general uses are expected to change greatly over the planning period. The Appleway North Street is envisioned to be, the Ironwood could connect to Fourth Street, enabling higher intensity commercial and residential uses. The Apple Fourth Street area is also expected to be a mixed-use area, with shared-use parking behind buildings is preferred. The comprehensive plan objectives, this relates to this special use request, is on the slide, the full list is on page seven and eight of your staff report. First objective, support the enhancement of existing urbanized areas and discourage sprawl, promote the efficient use of existing infrastructure thereby reducing impacts to undeveloped areas, and provide for a diversity of suitable housing forms within existing neighborhoods to match the needs of a changing population. The next finding is finding B-8B, that the design and planning of the site is or is not compatible with the location, setting, and existing uses on adjacent properties. The next few slides are site photos of the area. This is looking west on Mill Street. This is across the street on Government Way, looking west. This is the subject site. This is also on, across Government Way, looking northwest through the properties. This is on the northwest corner, looking south. And this is on the northwest corner, looking southwest. Here's the zoning map. You see, this property will have split zoning with C-17 on the front and R-17 located to the west, C-17L to the north, C-17 across the street, and C-17L to the south. Special use permits that have happened over time. In 1984, we had a special use permit for a group housing facility located to the south, and in 1990, we had a special use for a general contracting services facility to the north, and in 2002, there was a special use permit for a parking lot associated with the commercial development, and that was never built in 2002. That special use permit has expired. Here's a land use map showing the existing land uses in the area, with commercial to the north, east, and to the south is the civic use, and to the west are single-family dwellings. The last finding is finding B-8C, that the location, design, and size of the proposed use are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities, and services. This application has been routed through the city departments. Each department has indicated there are adequate public facilities and public utilities available to serve the proposed request. Staff has come up with 10 recommendations for this special use. Planning Commission may, as a condition of approval, establish reasonable requirements to mitigate any impacts that would adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood. I won't read them all. There's 10 recommendations, two from the Water Department, two from the Wastewater Department, four from the Planning Department, and two from the Parks Department. Planning Commission will need to consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? I'm just going to have to swear you in, so just give your name.
Mike Walker, Miller-Stauffer Architects.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Help me God.
I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
So, good evening. I'm Mike Walker with Miller-Stauffer Architects. We're representing Ben Widmeyer on this property. So some of this is a little bit of repeat with Mike's presentation, but this is the overall site. Here is where our subject parcel is, kind of surrounding zoning, kind of a little broader out. Here's kind of some adjacent uses and items around here. One thing that I wanted to note is, in the code, it speaks to the appropriate nature of R-34 and the proximity to shopping centers, parks, schools, arterials. So obviously, we're right on Government Way, a major arterial for our city. We have several restaurants peppered around, a major shopping center to the north, Wynton School is over here, and the park over here, so, and then Cutney Health up here. Here's kind of an aerial view, kind of showing the same thing, some of the uses in and around the site. Here's the river, Government Way, Wynton and the park over here, 95 right there. Again, some more look at what the surrounding properties are adjacent to the site, and then the site itself. Here's a view looking at the site on Mill Avenue, Government Way across the street, looking down Government Way to the site. Here's Mill Avenue, Idaho Youth Ranch over here. Here's kind of a long shot of the site itself, across some of the uses. Here's looking at Davidson, back at the site. Again, looking down Government Way. Here's Davidson, looking back towards Government Way. Again, here's kind of a tighter view, showing some of the commercial, existing commercial uses that are here. Idaho Youth Ranch here, there's commercial structure here. Again, some uses. I'm not going to really go through these, because Mike kind of touched on these, but the one thing that I did want to note is R-34 requirements for consideration. It talks about the transportation, obviously, being right on Government Way. We felt this was an appropriate site for an R-34, and in the close proximity to shopping centers. Just kind of goes over that. Here's kind of a site plan, showing kind of what we are proposing, putting the building up against Government Way, putting the parking behind that. We felt this was an appropriate solution for the site, so that we could develop a buffer between the heavy density use that would be along Government Way and the single families that would be along here. Kind of a schematic site plan, kind of going through the different levels. Here's kind of an alternate look. In your packet, you had some kind of repolinary massing. This is some further development that we had, showing kind of a tree canopy that we like to establish along Government Way, and then patio-style homes on the lower levels, and then terraces up above that. On this site, on Mill, we're proposing some sort of commercial use on there, whether it's a restaurant or a coffee shop of some sort. Here's a look, kind of Government Way against Mill. We wanted, in this type of development, we want to step back from Government Way as we go up in height. We feel that it would be appropriate for this type of development. Here's kind of a looking back with the parking lot, and then some of the apartments above that. Here's kind of looking from Mill, again, looking towards the back and kind of the elevation on Mill Street. Here's kind of a view, if you were walking down Government Way towards the south, this would be the kind of the coffee shop, and then here's some of the patio-style residents that we'd like to propose. Kind of a commercial use, like we noted on the corner of Mill and Government Way. Why we think it's, this site's good for R-34, we think it provides a good transitional buffer between the commercial that's across from Government Way and the R-12 that's on the other side of our site. We think it's an appropriate site, because it provides needed housing in an area that's close to the medical district, it's within biking district to the CBD, the education corridor, Riverstone. The other thing to note is, the city has established two bike lanes that go down Government Way, so we feel like this is an appropriate development to take advantage of that. We don't feel like the, sorry, the density would have any major burden to the city services. There's major sewer and water in all three roads, so, and that was kind of highlighted by your staff. And then enhanced tax base by a factor of two, if it was approved. I'd stand for any questions.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mike. If you could go to that site plan, I'd appreciate that. Chat, yeah, that'll probably work. So, I'm not sure if the person in the audience is going to testify or not, but we had some written comments from someone that I believe would be the house on Davidson directly to the west of this. Maybe you could show on the cursor where that would be?
Are you tucking right here?
That would be 210 Davidson.
So this is Davidson, this, the first residential parcel.
So he makes a point that, you know, he's relatively in favor of this if two things happened. One, if the parking that would be next to him on the west could be pulled back maybe 10 feet to the east, and then, maybe you could speak to that. I suspect that might be somewhat challenging in what you're trying to do to meet your parking requirement and so forth.
It is, it is a little bit, but we initially were sensitive to this and wanted to go a little bit above and beyond and create a nice buffer strip between this subject project and the residential, the single family that are on there. We would also plan on doing fencing, you know, sight obscuring fencing, as well as heavy vegetation, trees, arboretum, things of that nature, to help screen this parking lot from those uses.
It's kind of where I was going to go with, beyond the notion of doing something with the physical layout of the parking. I don't know if that's possible, but it certainly would seem reasonable in my mind to do something, because see, the cars, as they come in, they're going to be pointed, headlight first, you know, towards the west, and I think it'd be very critical to have a, you know, 100% sight obscuring fence and landscape buffer along there. If that was something that shook out up here as another condition to this, it sounds like that's something that would be reasonable.
I would think so. I mean, again, you know, we want to create good neighbors, and so we would definitely, through the design of the project, treat this area located along here very sensitive and, you know, create those sight obscuring, you know, notions, and look at different alternatives that are normally done along this way.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff.
Mike, go ahead.
Kind of a follow-up on that, because I was going to ask that same question, but are there any, or what are the standards when it comes to lighting? Because obviously, in a parking lot, and it's adjoining a residential neighborhood, I've seen situations, I can think of a church up north on Ramsey, where, you know, they had to do a lot of downlighting and stuff like that, so I don't know if there's standards or what the standards are. I suppose there are standards, but...
The lighting standard, they'll have to have full cutoff lighting, so the lighting is facedown and onto the parking lot, and not spilling over the property.
Okay, so that would be part of the building permit and the approval processes and whatnot? Okay.
Quick question. Are the parking spaces allotted here? Have you done the full calculations, or is this indicative at this point?
No, this is...
Tight to what you're planning on? Only because we went through Snowmageddon this year, and we have to worry about where all that snow goes, when you got all those cars in there. Where's that going to land? And I'm looking at a pretty tight parking lot.
I wouldn't say this is the final design. I mean, this is definitely a schematic-level design. Obviously, we have to do stormwater notions, which tends to add more green space, more retention basins, and things of that nature. And it's, as you probably well know, it's a balancing act between the number of units, what type of units, how many spaces are provided, how much stormwater, and so you just kind of massage all that stuff until you get to the sweet spot, which is what you ultimately end up with. But, you know, we would definitely take advantage of some of the city ordinances by, you know, doing compact spaces, things of that nature to...
Electric car charging.
Potentially.
That's going to be on every one of these meetings now with me. They're coming from Portland, they're coming from Seattle with a charger, and so...
And then I think we would also do things too, to, as we're kind of showing along here, we would look at strategies of tucking the parking underneath the building, things of that nature, to try to...
Use the snow.
Make it more pleasurable parking lot, as well as provide, you know, we're an advocate of trees and shrubbery and things of that nature.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a few minutes to come back later. Thanks, Mike.
I have a question for staff. The, on condition number eight, if the project is 50,000 square feet or larger, don't we know that based on the lot size, what the size would be, or is that only for the built?
That's the building size.
Okay.
And they haven't given us the exact square footage yet of the building.
Okay.
Okay. The first person on our list is Mary Jo...
Krings.
Kings?
Krings.
Krings, and you do, you do not wish to speak?
I've changed my mind.
Come on down.
Thank you.
All I got to do is swear you in, give us your name.
I am Mary Jo Krings.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Help me God.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I've been taking some notes here. Looking at the plan that we saw, it looks like the use permit is for 34 units, unless I'm mistaken. It looked to me like the parking structure area is only 45 spaces. I don't think the parking allotment is anywhere near that's adequate for this size building. I think there's going to be a lot of parking on the street, and I'm, I'd like some clarification on how many spaces of parking have been allowed. I don't think this neighborhood is ready or cognizant for as much parking is going to be in the neighborhood. The other thing that I'm concerned about, and mostly, is density on Government Way, and a four-story building is really hard to see past. Most of us in Coeur d'Alene come here because we love the views, and when we put a four-story building on a major thoroughfare, the people who are driving or even walking, in my opinion, that diminishes our appreciation of where we live. Those are my concerns.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Bill and Maureen Barer, they, and they're up, they're opposed, but they just not wish to speak? Karen Schumer is opposed and does not wish to speak, or you're okay? Okay, thank you. Karen... Karen Hansen is opposed and do not wish to speak? Okay, thank you. Terry Godbout does wish to speak. Just your name and I'll swear in.
Terry Godbout.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead, Terry.
First of all, I want to commend Mike Walker. His firm has done a terrific job in the architecture for this building. I like the way they broke up the facade on government way and the way they stepped the top back. I do question his ability in math. He tries to tell us that R34 is a buffer between C17 and R12. It seems to me that a buffer would be somewhere between 12 and 17, not 34. To me, both this project and the other project represent spot zoning. And the characteristics of spot zoning is that the area is small compared to districts surrounding the parcel in question. The new district allows land uses inconsistent with those allowed in the vicinity. The spot zone would confer a special benefit on the individual property owner, not commonly enjoyed by the owners of similar property. And the existence of the spot zone conflicts with the policies and the text of the master plan and the future use map. So my concern here is establishing a precedent. And we, this R34 is fast becoming a norm with developers in this community. And it is not in existence on any of the.
On the comprehensive plan.
But it, right now, it kind of seems like everybody who is submitting a project is going to try to come up with the R34, whether it's a huge river's edge project or something smaller than this. So I, before we start developing areas of R34 in Coeur d'Alene, I would like to see it be part of the comprehensive plan, something kind of thought out so it works with the adjacent properties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Carolyn and John Griffin are neutral and do not wish to speak. Elaine Price is opposed and does not wish to speak. Danny Griffin is neutral and you do wish to speak. Danny, just state your name and I'll swear in.
Danny Griffin.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
I'm just curious how what kind of apartment housing is going to be going in. I don't know if it takes a different kind for like low income. But then also, it was kind of brought up on the whole parking thing. I live on 210 West Emma, so there's a block north. And the house next to me is a partial commercial. And then there's a salon across the street and a Java shop. And they, they didn't make enough parking for those. And so parking as that is, goes all the way up the street when they, when they go into work. And so I end up having to park sometimes down the street just to be able to get to my house. And so it'd be interesting just to get maybe a little more information.
Sure, the applicant will come back up again and can address those issues later. Thanks, Danny. Appreciate it. Brian Duggal, I'm sorry, is opposed and does not wish to speak. Isaac Shannon is a gentleman who gave us the letter, but also is in, come out in favor, neutral and did not wish to speak.
I'll speak, actually.
You want to speak?
That's all right.
Sure, come on. Just state your name and I'll swear in.
Isaac Shannon.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, development and that thing is, you know, something that's always going to happen. So I'm not against it by any means, but I just rather see it done right. And I mean, that's when I worry about the parking and that type of an issue. And I know they always say they're going to do a wall and, you know, make extra space. But at the end of the day, you know, a lot of times when you got to have those extra parking spots, that kind of goes to the wayside. So although I am in favor of, you know, doing something right there, I would like to make sure, you know, that that space is granted.
Mm-hmm. Valid points.
That's really my main objective there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. And then Eric Swanbeck is opposed and does wish to make a comment? Just, great, just state your name and I'll swear in. State your name, please.
I'm sorry, Eric Swanbeck.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead, Eric.
I have a few comments to make. And the one is, I moved here 15 years ago and I was on a flight going somewhere and I was sitting next to a lady who had vacationed here for years. And her comment to me was that she used to vacation in Coeur d'Alene, but now that it's gotten so big, her husband and she don't come here anymore. And I, I didn't think much of it at the time because I thought Coeur d'Alene was the perfect size and it's not for everybody. But I do agree with what this lady said right here. And as I've seen Coeur d'Alene grow and I see high rises going up, parking garages going up, we're a community that advertises the beauty of the scenery, partly, and that's how we get tourists to come here. But yet we keep building big buildings and ruining the view of the mountains, the lake and, and everything. I live in that neighborhood just behind there on, I live on 1808 Panzy Street, which is one block away. And I bought a house in a single-story neighborhood, a quaint store, a single-story neighborhood. And since I have been there, I feel like I'm just getting squeezed out from all sides. I feel like the hospital's coming one way, this project's coming the other way. I've had a, a two-story house go in across the street, a two-story house that's kitty-cornered to the lot. And the person who moved in cut down all the trees. I lost my privacy. There are duplexes going in in every empty lot. And I just feel like I'm being squeezed out and that neighborhood is being squeezed out. And I, I'm not in favor of this project and I just, I, I have to wonder what else is going to come down the line once an exception is made for this. Where else are we going to make exceptions? And I, I have said to friends of mine that I don't feel like this is a, a city of neighborhoods and communities anymore. It's businesses, it's duplexes, it's high rises. And I, I, I kind of compare it, do we want to be another Spokane or do we want to be Coeur d'Alene? And that's what I think you have to consider.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty sure. Okay, has anyone else wished to speak before I ask the applicant to come back up and comment on anything you heard? Okay, Mike, you want to come up here?
There was kind of a couple of things that I heard that I wanted, I guess, you guys to know that it's also our concern as well. You know, we like to protect view sheds and views and we really are responsive to height. And with that, you know, in that updated images, you know, we terraced or stepped the top of the building again to try to not create a wall. You know, your typical three-story apartment with a pitched roof that is ultimately four stories. We want to create something that has a little bit of a different feel there with the patio style homes and the terraces. And then on the terraces, you know, we want to provide rooftop gardens, things of that nature so that, you know, you get that variety that I think the site requires. Along with the, the comment about parking, in that site plan, we show 93 spaces in there. Depending on, like I'd mentioned with the, the variety of different unit types, as you well know, a studio requires a one-bedroom, a one-bedroom requires one and a half, two-bedroom on up requires two bedrooms. So working with those different types of units and the, the mix that we see in this, which we do see a mix of studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, I, I think we can really work with the parking lot so it isn't this obtrusive thing that everybody's used to a parking lot being, as well as we want to include landscaping so it's not just a, you know, an asphalt jungle.
Got a question. On the C17L, you have a sheet here that says, I believe the height is 45 feet that you can go to, is that right, Mike, on a C17L? I'm trying to give comparison.
For the C17, it's 45, but it's 63 feet for the R34.
And it's how much for the R34?
63 feet.
So they can go 63 feet in an R34 compared to our 45 feet?
For residential, but if it's a commercial use, it's unlimited in C17.
Right, yeah. And I appreciate you doing a buffer zone. The buildings are kind of up on government way and you've heard some of the concerns of at least the adjacent neighbor in the letter. And I don't know if you saw the letter or.
I did.
Okay. So hopefully, you know, you guys can address that because it's more or less headlights and noise and engine starting and.
And I think we can also look at alternatives to the parking layout to try to minimize that as well.
All right. And the number of parking spaces, as Commissioner Fleming said, perhaps, you know, because what we saw is just a lot of stalls and I know you got to have swells and you got to storm water. So some of those spaces are going to have to be probably eliminated or changed so that you have some areas with stormwater collective and, and snow.
Right.
So people aren't parking in that area in the street. Because it is a little bit, not congested, but there's no parking on government way, but on the side street.
Right, and we, we would like to see this project standalone on its own parcel. Again, that's why we've tried to minimize the footprint and push it to government way. And then also, you know, with the, the R34, you know, there's good setbacks with that. So that sets that off of, it's a 20-foot frontage setback. So we, we plan on taking advantage of that, you know, with planting strips and pushing the trees out there, not only for people walking down the sidewalk, but also as a noise buffer for people in the, the apartment building. We want, we see those trees as an advantage for this project and so we want to encourage that.
Okay. Questions?
Put you on the hot seat, representing the client, the client owner. Do they see this as an affordable housing project or is it going to be target market?
I don't know if that's been determined at this time.
Okay.
So I really couldn't speak to that.
You'll know when you start to build it. Okay, because that's the one thing we hear every day, is there's not enough affordable housing. And people are living in mobile homes, they're living in less than, you know, amenable digs. And we struggle. Not everyone can afford a house. No, not everyone can afford the taxes associated with that. And so that's the crux we're in. People keep coming and they need a roof over their heads. Quite often they're a single mom or a single dad with two kids. And we have to think about that. We, we cannot keep shoving them further out to Rathrum. And, and they work at the hospital. They work at the grocery store. They work at ShopCo. You know, not any longer. ShopCo's gone, another one gone. That'll be our next apartment building redo. But we do have to address affordable housing and, and we're not doing it yet here. And this is not a rich man's town for all. So that's our concern here.
I, I do know through some conversations that the owner has or is in the process of looking at that and looking at if this facility wants to be one or another. But I definitely knew that they're concerned about that as well.
Okay. As long as we're aware.
I just, I just don't think it's been determined at this time.
Well, and it's tough. You've got to look at the economics, but we on the others here, here there just is not enough housing for people. And that's why we get these huge proposals because there's a demand and it's driving this, this kind of project, so.
Peter?
I have a question, Steph. How many R34s do we have in the city and do we have any in this area?
We're trying to think of where the closest ones are.
I can't recall off the top of my head without looking at the GIS map.
Yeah. Downtown and Riverstone.
The one on Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive.
From the last time we had one of these, but we don't, we don't have a lot of them. Is that right?
No, and certainly not in this area. Yeah, I was doing the same thing.
Okay, that, that, not a lot is, I guess, is adequate. Thank you.
Is that it for questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
No, questions?
No more questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Luttrell. I don't know if that question was directed toward the comment of spot zoning.
Well.
Because R34 is not a zone.
You don't have a zone for R34.
And that's, that's why we're doing a special use permit rather than a zone change.
It was directed mostly, you know, we're going through the throes of revising, updating our comprehensive plan. And that, you know, the person's comment, we need to take that in consideration, I think is, is well thought out and I, I think we need to do that. But then fighting through this current, current one right here, I, I see that there's some large development north of there, you know, the Ironwood and so forth. And I, sympathetic of people losing, you know, our traditional property. I live in an area where when that happens, I get very upset. But it also, this is an area that, that seems to be growing, not only here, but then to the west on the other, you know, to the west on Lincoln Way and so forth. And I, I, well, that's, thank you.
Go ahead, John.
I had a question, just to follow up with staff on the point of spot zoning and, and that, I just wanted to be clear in my mind that this is not spot zoning. You're nodding affirmative, it is not. Correct me if I'm wrong, but R34 is a permitted use in C17L with a special use permit, correct?
Well, ours, R34 is not a use, it's not a zone, it's a district. And so it's not a zone. Can't have spot zoning if you're not changing the zone of a piece of property. So the zone remains C17L with a R34 district overlay essentially.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public testimony on this particular item and bring it to the commissioners to have further discussion and/or a motion.
If I could, some discussion. I, I find it interesting and I, I think going forward, we're going to see more and more, you know, we've talked with our comp plan and infill is going to be a, a topic. You know, I think we're going to see the city change a little bit. Some areas that are, you know, kind of ripe for redevelopment will, will re, will redevelop. You know, the limits of Coeur d'Alene are kind of roped in now. You know, the big open fields, the, the last one being that one on Ramsey Road that, you know, we've already seen a preliminary plat on. You know, the, the wide open spaces are gone. We're going to be seeing more of this. And I think it's important not to close the door on these projects, but to see that they're done well. And so I, I comment, I guess, you know, folks that have been here 15 years, they say, well, I've been here 15 years and I see the city's changing. I'm just going to speak up here and say, you know, from a guy that was born here and learned to drive these streets in 1973, when there was 15 stoplights, yeah, for sure, there's some times I reminisce on and reflect on what that might be like and how cool that little town was. But that's not realistic. I think growth and vibrancy and keeping this town alive go hand in hand. And I'm going to go on the record and say that, you know, while 1973 Coeur d'Alene was maybe a little bit easier to get around, and in a lot of ways, the night, the 2019 Coeur d'Alene is a lot, a lot better Coeur d'Alene. So I, you know, I, I'm not in favor of getting a no mindset and having some kind of growth moratorium. And I think what we should be looking for is, you know, quality projects, quality projects. And then this one has, I think, a number of, of, of great features. He's going to buffer that west side. I would, I would think that we should add maybe a condition that specifically requires a, you know, a side obscuring fence and landscape buffer on the west property line. But, you know, the step back of the facility, the. But, you know, the step back of the facility, the, the nature, the character, the, what I can see, and what I believe this team is going to put together is going to be a quality project, and it gets my vote.
On that, I kind of, I agree with what Commissioner Ingles just said, and as far as, you know, city growing, we are kind of boxed in land-wise, so unfortunately, we're going to be going up instead of out in a lot of properties. And the way the city is changing, a lot of older homes, especially in this section, close to Cootney Medical Center, they're going to be sold off either by people who live there now, or people who don't want to stay in that general area, and I see more of that happening, and single parcels being bought up and put together for things like this. So I, again, I repeat myself and agree with Mr. Ingles. We have to look at not trying to stop growth, but do smart, smart growth, but look for good projects. And to me, this one certainly helps doing something on pieces of property that have buildings that probably are very old, and this is going to add to perhaps some neighborhood commercial for that neighborhood, as well as some affordable, and, but that is a word that is out there, and depending on what affordable might mean to some people, doesn't mean it to everyone. So hopefully, those units will be available for the people that work in that Cootney Medical corridor and such, and/or anywhere else in the city. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Peter.
I'd like to talk about the, the growth. We're going through a process of a comprehensive plan, and we'll take citizen input, we'll have, I think Hillary will advertise about everything. So I encourage you to listen, and to attend, and to participate, because your concerns are our concerns. Now, I, I don't know what controlled growth is, but I think collectively, we can come up with something that is more understandable by all of us, by all of the community. So I, I urge you to participate in any fashion. And secondly, I don't share Mr. Ingles' view of, of the city being locked in. I think we have the ability to go out through annexation and so forth, and I believe that will come as, as time passes, because we do, the city does have something that others can't have, and that's water and sewer. But first of all, keep attention to our comprehensive plan and, and keep our feet to the fire to make sure that your concerns and interest are in that plan. Thank you.
And, and Peter, I agree with some of your comments. As far as trying to go out, we're kind of boxed in, and I say that unfortunately because of our city limits and where we can go when we butt up against Hayden, or, or Post Falls, or other cities. Those areas have to be somewhat in agreement to come into the city of Coeur d'Alene. So yes, we see a lot of, we have been seeing a lot of annexations on Prairie, only because that's kind of where our city limits end at this particular point in time.
But my view is along Lake Coeur d'Alene Drive and south towards Micah Flats.
Yeah.
And Cougar Bay, and, and that area. It's, it's not going to be tomorrow, but, you know, it's a thought.
Yeah, and, and I, and I say, we are working on the comp plan, and we've got to look at smart growth nowadays, and city staff is very aware of that, and they work very hard on doing things like that. And I understand it's hard for people that have lived here for a long time, and, you know, see vacant land next to them, but unfortunately, that's, that's changed. And again, we've just got to be smart about what we're doing. Go ahead, John.
No, I take your point real well, Commissioner Luttrell. And what Davey Aiden used to say is, is really not that we're completely pinned in. Sure, we can jump the river and go south and go out Lake Coeur d'Alene Drive. What he used to say was, the, the easy, easy developable open space is running out. You know, the, the flat, you know, stuff out north is, is, you know, so you can do that, but it, it gets harder.
Okay, with that, we, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, on this side.
Yeah, I would just like to say I understand and appreciate the residents in that area and your concerns. I think one of the tasks ahead of us is to identify opportunities to confront the growth and identify where we can do smart density. In transition zones and buffer zones and C-17L, I think offer, afford us that opportunity. We've been educating ourselves, I think, on principles of good density. I think there's still a lot we need to learn and understand about that. But I've made a habit of driving around the areas where the, where the hearings are, where the subject properties are, looking at not only what it looks like now and what the proposal might do, but what it could look like even if in its current, without a special use. And, and looking at what permitted uses of a C-17L, there are a lot of things that might have similar, present similar concerns to the residents, in terms of, you know, forty-five feet is not the same as sixty-three feet, but it's still significantly higher than what exists now. Offices, rehab facilities, churches, juvenile offenders facility, there are a number of special, there are a number of permitted uses as it exists now that might present similar concerns to area residents, and I understand that. But I think the task for us is to determine if the R-34 has significantly worse, or, or the impact is dramatically different than what currently exists in the zoning. So thinking about that, I feel like this buffer zone, and some of the conditions that the staff have presented, to me, represent a good opportunity for some smart density.
Some good discussion here. If we can get a motion, and/or if there's any other conditions you might want to add?
I would propose that we, I think the developer's going to do it anyway, but I would feel comfortable if we added under planning, a condition nine, and then renumber parks ten and eleven, and the ninth condition reads something like...
John, if we can make that into a motion first, and then whoever would like to make a motion, and if that's you?
Well, let's, let's do that.
Go right ahead, thank you.
I'll, then, a motion that we make the following findings in order for SP-119 as a matter that's come before this planning commission tonight, April ninth, two thousand nineteen. And there being present a person requesting approval of item SP-119, an R-34 density special use permit in the R-17 and C-17L zoning districts, the applicant being Benjamin Woodmire, and the location being a 1.26 acre parcel located at seventeen fifteen North Government Way. Propose in the motion that we adopt findings B-1 through B-7, as written in our findings worksheet. And we make the finding B-8, that this special use permit proposal is in conformance with the comp plan, and that it recognizes that it is an area in transition, and that it is supported by the comp plan objectives as listed in the findings worksheet. It supports, as supported, it supports all of those goals. And I would say it's specifically, while it may not, Commissioner Fleming, be workforce housing per se, it offers, you know, studio apartments, and, you know, the, at least a, a chance it's something more affordable than what we might have, and, but, you know, got to provide at least a variety of housing product, and the other things that are sprinkled through these objectives. We've talked about, you know, the, an infill project is a project that's put in the city limits where there's already infrastructure in place, and we don't sprawl out. B-8B, that the design and planning of the site is compatible with the location setting and existing uses, that this is an appropriate fit, that the density and intensity as proposed will work at that site, and that the development is, will be compatible, compatible with the existing land uses in that area, and that the design and appearance of the project would be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Finding B-8C, that the location, design, and size of the proposal is such that the development will be adequately served by streets, public facilities, utilities, and services, and in your staff report, and Mike pointed out in his presentation, services are available. City staff has no concerns or objections, other than what might be reflected in the conditions, which are on page four of the worksheet here. There is currently ten of those. I'm not going to read those, but I would propose that we incorporate all of those with one additional one under planning, that would read something to the effect that the project would provide, will provide a site obscuring fence and landscaping buffer on the west property line, boundary. That said, uh, whoop, that the planning commission pursuant to the aforementioned would find that the special use permit for Ben Woodmire, as described in the application, should be approved.
Thank you, John, I have a first, and...
Well, second.
I have a second by Ward. Roll call, Shannon, please.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina? Um, not Messina, Mandel?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay, SP-1-19 is approved. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is SP-2-19. The address is nineteen forty Riverstone. It's a proposed R-34 density increase, special use permit, permit in a C-17 zoning district. Sounds familiar. Tammy, go right ahead.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. So this evening, the applicant is Parkwood Business Properties, doing business as Glacier Nineteen Forty Riverstone LLC. And again, the request is for an R-34 density increase special use permit to allow for a sixty-five unit multifamily apartment structure in the C-17 zoning district. The location is nineteen forty Riverstone Drive, and the legal notice was published in the Coeur d'Alene Press on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. This is a location map, and the subject property is outlined here in the red, and this is the Riverstone Pond that we're all familiar with, and give you a perspective of some of the nearby roads. This is Salties Way, and Northwest Boulevard, Riverstone Drive, comes right across here on the front of the property, and then John Loop runs around here. Again, this is an aerial photo, a little closer, and this is the subject property. This is an office use, the Pinkerton Building, and then Anthony's Restaurant is located here. So the subject property is located in Riverstone, next to the Riverstone Pond, and between the Pinkerton Office Building and Anthony's Restaurant. The property consists of two lots totaling two point four acres, and the applicant is proposing sixty-five residential apartments above a subterranean parking garage on the subject site. In addition, they're proposing additional surface parking, including some carports, and the gross area of the five-story structure is approximately seventy thousand square feet, which sits above a fifteen thousand square foot underground parking garage. The apartment units will be comprised of one and two-bedroom layouts, and the current zoning with the two parcels at two point four acres would allow for a total of forty-two residential units on that size of a parcel. The proposed structure is five stories tall and will be allowed a maximum height of sixty-three feet, in accordance with the proposed R-34 zoning height restrictions for multifamily structures. And the applicant has submitted two building elevations with the proposed building indicating how it would look from two various vantage points. And currently, as you can see on the aerial photo, the subject property is vacant and has been since the Riverstone development was plotted in two thousand and five. And they have also submitted a site plan that will show the layout, parking, and the building location. And this is a proposed site plan. As you can see, the building would be here, and this is where the Riverstone Pond is located. There would be three access points into the property, one off of Riverstone Drive, a second one off of Riverstone Drive, and then one off of John Loop. They've got surface parking noted here, and then some carports here with the subterranean parking below the structure. Preliminary basement plan, where the parking is located, they've also included some bicycle parking and some storage areas for tenants, and the applicant can get into more detail about the floor layout plans if you'd like. This is a level one, first four plan. All of these units do have, or most of these units do have decks. And this is the preliminary second, third, and fourth level floor plan, and the preliminary fifth level floor plan. This is the east elevation, and again, it is five stories tall for the proposed structure, and they are allowed to go a maximum of sixty-three feet tall with that approved R-34 special use permit. And this is the west elevation. So this evening, I'll cover all three of these findings with my presentation. Finding B-8A, that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan designates this as the Spokane River District, and it is transition. The transition areas are where the character of the neighborhood is in transition and should be developed with care. The street network, the number of building lots, and general land use are expected to change greatly within the planning period. And Spokane River District is also noted, it's included in your staff report, but it does talk about multitude of changes in that area, and the Spokane River District is envisioned to be a mixed-use neighborhood consisting of housing and commercial retail, service activities that embrace, or that embrace the aesthetics of the proximity to the Spokane River. I've included three of these comprehensive plan objectives here on the slide, but there are additional goals and objectives noted in your staff report on pages eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Finding B-8B, that the design and planning of the site is, and is, or is not compatible with the location, setting, and existing uses on the adjacent property. Riverstone is a mixed-use development that includes a variety of uses. Anthony's Restaurant abuts the property on the east side, and an office use is located on the west side of the subject property. There are single-family dwellings, multifamily, mixed uses, professional office uses, and senior apartments within the development. There are two hotel structures within the development that are five stories tall in proximity to the subject property. The mixed-use condo development along Main Street is approximately sixty-four feet at its highest point, and the riverfront house located in Bella Reve along Beebe and Bella Reve Lane is fifty-five, fifty-five feet tall at its highest point. And I took a few site photos. This is the view along Riverstone Drive looking south toward the subject property. You can see the Pinkerton Building. This is a view from John Loop looking west at the subject property with Anthony's Restaurant in the background. This is Anthony's, and this is the hotel, and this is the subject property. This is a view from John Loop looking south toward the existing office building, which abuts the subject property. This is the subject property, a portion of it here, and then the office building. And a view from Riverstone Drive looking west at the neighboring office use and a care facility in this area. And another view from John Loop looking west toward the subject property. And the Riverstone mixed-use development is located here, hotel in the background, and then Anthony's here with the subject property here. And this is the mixed-use development located in Riverstone, the Riverstone Village along Main Street. And this is the property that I noted, that was approximately sixty-four feet tall with the turret here. This is our current zoning map, which is the subject property outlined here, and as you can see by the red, it is all zoned C-17, which is our commercial zoning district, and this is a planned unit development. But the underlying zone is also C-17. Bella Reve is R-17 along the river. I included the special use permits that had been approved in the Riverstone District. This was nineteen eighty-six, it has now been developed into senior housing, and that was for a mobile home park. It has now been developed into senior housing and that was for a mobile home park. And then in two thousand and two, a special use permit was approved and they did not ever build on it and that's where the hotel site currently is now. And then this is the subject property where they're requesting a special use permit. This is our land use map showing the vacant parcel here and then the commercial uses surrounding that with some residential uses and some duplex uses, multifamily. Finding B eight C that the location, size and design of the proposed are such that the development will or will not be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities and services. City staff from engineering, streets, water, fire, parks and wastewater departments have reviewed the application request in regard to the public utilities and facilities. Each department indicated that there are adequate public facilities and public utilities available to serve the proposed request and there was no objection to the special use request as proposed. So I'm not going to read all of the comments that we got from the departments. They are included on pages eighteen and nineteen, but I will touch upon streets. The subject property is bordered by Riverstone Drive to the northeast and John Loop to the northwest. The current street widths meet the city standards. Seltice Way and Northwest Boulevard are the closest arterials. According to Glenn Miles, Executive Director of KMPO, both Riverstone Drive and John Loop are considered to be unclassified roadways categorizing them as local streets. And as far as traffic, traffic projections provided by J U B engineers were validated based on the I T E trip generation manual. The anticipated traffic levels are approximately twenty-three AM peak hour trips and twenty-nine PM peak hour trips. These traffic volumes are minor in comparison to the existing nine hundred and fifty-four PM peak hour trips on Riverstone Drive as reported in the Atlas Traffic Impact Study completed by Welch Comer. Streets and Engineering has no objections to the proposed special use permit at this So there are four conditions that are recommended for this approval. The Parks Department has added a condition that they should build a pedestrian connection from the south side of the apartment building connecting to the perimeter path around the Riverstone Pond. And the proposal does show a connection, but the Parks Department did want to make sure that we had that condition added. Wastewater, this project will be required to connect to existing public sewer connections in Riverstone and the project will be required to abandon the unused sewer lateral connection at the public sewer main in Riverstone. And the last condition, a geotechnical site evaluation will be required prior to the building permit issuance and that is from the engineering and building departments. So the city engineer is here for additional questions, should you have them? And the applicant is also here. Any questions?
Nope. Okay. You have any questions for the city engineer before? No?
Okay.
Not at this time? You state your name and I'll swear you in, Ryan.
Good evening. Ryan Nip.
Do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you for the time this evening. My name is Ryan Nip, partner at Parkwood Business Properties, owner of nineteen forty Riverstone, requesting a special use permit for an R thirty-four density. And before we dive in the details of Riverstone Lake Apartments, we'd like to first discuss who we are and what we do. Parkwood Business Properties is a local commercial real estate development and management company. We've been doing business for over forty years in our community. We develop and own office, medical office, retail, tech flex, industrial, hotel and multifamily properties. Our goal is to create and develop high-quality projects which add value to our commercial neighborhoods and we live here and we want to take pride in the projects that we create. And to take it a step further, one of our company values is to give back to the community and so it's important to us to enhance the community that we live in through our business and civic involvement. I'd like to just show you a few pictures of properties that we have developed and currently own and manage. This is our seven hundred Ironwood Drive building across the street from the Kootenay Health Hospital. This is our nineteen nineteen Lincoln Way project, also a medical office building, home to Kootenay Clinics. This is our nineteen fifteen Emma Building, also the VA Building. It is the region's only outpatient facility for our veterans. This is a general office building called Riverview Tower and all these pictures I'm sharing with you are all in the Coeur d'Alene and Hayden communities. This is a one hundred and forty thousand square foot tech flex building, home to Esterline, also called Advanced Input Systems. This is one of our retail projects, S ninety-five. Tenants are Ulta, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, TJ Maxx, Petco and Pier One. This is our Prairie Shopping Center in Hayden. Tenants such as Albertson's or Rite Aid are in this project. And this is one of the hotels that we own, Spring Hill Suites, which is right next door to Riverstone. Now I'd like to get into the details of our project. You've already seen the site location next to Pinkerton and Anthony's highlighted in yellow. This is another shot of our site on the left-hand side overlooking the pond. And here's a three D elevation of our apartment complex. We're very excited to make this proposal because we believe we've identified a project and a use that is economically viable, yet minimizes the impact to the infrastructure and traffic impacts. And in future slides, we'll dive into why. Here's another from a different elevation and different view. Project details, we're on two point four acres, a five-story apartment building, wood frame construction over a concrete pedestal, sixty-three feet in height and approximately seventy thousand square feet. And we're looking at right around sixty-five units. So this isn't a six hundred and fifty unit or four hundred unit or two hundred unit project. It's sixty-five units that we think is right-sized and appropriately sized on our site. And then as mentioned, we will have an underground parking garage with surface parking and carports as well. Based on this use and the shape and design of this building, we're really proud to create a project that delivers a great landscaping area and generous setbacks. So from the front setback, twenty feet is required and we have at a minimum one hundred and eighty-three feet. The rear setback, which is closer to the pond, that's at a minimum fifty feet and greater. And so we really want to set that back and have generous landscaping to soften that area. And so as a result of this shape and the use which requires less parking than other commercial projects, thirty-nine percent of the site is a landscape area. And we know connectivity to the park is important, not only to the city, but to us. And so we do have pedestrian access for our residents here and a bike path connecting to the Riverstone Trail as well. We're not going to dive into all of the elements of the comm plan and how we adhere to that, but we'll highlight a few things. One, we're located in the River District. The Spokane River District is envisioned to be mixed-use neighborhoods consisting of housing and commercial retail and service activities that embrace the aesthetics of the proximity to the Spokane River. A few characteristics we would like to highlight in the River District that we believe apply to us, various commercial, residential and mixed uses, that overall density may approach ten to sixteen dwelling units per acre, but pockets of denser housing are appropriate and encouraged, that the scale of development will be urban in nature promoting multimodal connectivity to downtown. So how are we compatible to the neighborhood and to Riverstone? We believe we're delivering a very high-quality project that we're proud to present. It will have a unique building footprint and shape, multiple roof lines, abundant decks, appealing exterior materials, generous glass and as I mentioned, beautiful abundant landscaping. Riverstone sets a high bar. It's a quality, quality development, mixed-use development and we feel like we're meeting those expectations and hopefully can even enhance and add to the Riverstone development. How are we with the rest of the building heights in the neighborhood? Our proposal at sixty-three feet, that compares to the Hampton Inn and Suites at seventy-four feet, the Village at Riverstone, the top end of the turrets, sixty-four feet, the Pinkerton Building, that top height is fifty-five feet and Staybridge Suites, which is currently being completed at fifty-nine feet. So we feel like we're blending in with the rest of the other buildings in Riverstone. How do we impact infrastructure and services? And I'm just going to pick out the point about the R thirty-four and I'm going to read this. Per the city, to warrant consideration of granting a special use permit to R thirty-four, the property must meet the following. Be in close proximity to an arterial sufficient to handle the amount of traffic generated by the request in addition to that of the surrounding neighborhood and the project and accessing street must be designed in such a way so as to minimize vehicular traffic through adjacent residential neighborhoods. And number two, be in close proximity to shopping, schools and park areas. To address number two first, we are across the street from shopping, we are less than a mile away from Wynton Elementary and we are adjacent and right next to Riverstone Park. Addressing number one, be in close proximity to an arterial. This next slide will highlight in blue, Riverstone Drive and that's the drive that we'll be accessing to reach two arterials, one Seltice Way via a signalized intersection to the west and to the east Northwest Boulevard, also a signalized intersection. We've highlighted this area in orange as well to just promote that we'll have multiple points of ingress and egress, one approach on John Loop and two approaches onto Riverstone Drive. We now like to dive into the zoning and apartment versus office comparison. This circles back to how we are excited that we've identified a project that is minimizing the traffic impacts and infrastructure to the best we can possible. We purchased this site many years ago thinking it's a commercial project, perhaps office. We've developed a lot of office product in the past. And as time went on, we discovered, wow, apartments, this could be a great situation for us, addressing concerns with traffic in the public. And I'm just going to review this here. So right now under C seventeen zoning classification, we could do seventeen units per acre and a building height of forty-five feet. To go to a special use permit to an R thirty-four density that allows thirty-four units per acre at a max building height of sixty-three feet. Our proposal is at twenty-seven units per acre at sixty-three feet. So we're kind of right in between the R seventeen and the R thirty-four, so we're not trying to max out our project to the R thirty-four designation. An office, to remind everyone, under the C seventeen zoning, which our property is, we are not required to do a special use permit and we're allowed to do unlimited building area and unlimited max building height. With parking, our proposal requires one hundred and eleven parking stalls. We're delivering one hundred and thirty-three. And as a comparison, if we were to build an office building of the same size of our proposed apartment building, which is seventy thousand square feet, that would require two hundred and twelve parking stalls. That is three stalls per one thousand square feet. That's the city code requirement. In practice, with the office buildings that we own, we typically need four stalls to five stalls per one thousand square feet. So we're showing the requirement of two hundred and twelve, but it would be more parking that ultimately be required. We hired J U B to do a trip generation report to look at traffic and what this table shows is, on the left, the forty-nine apartments that was used for our site for the Atlas Traffic Study recently completed by Welch Comer. The next column over is our proposed sixty-five apartments and the final column is that office building as a comparison if we were to build a seventy thousand square foot office building. We think this is a pretty telling slide. Under the forty-nine apartments, AM peak hour, eighteen car trips, the PM twenty-one and daily two sixty-seven. Our proposed sixty-five apartments is at twenty-three trips AM, PM twenty-eight and daily three fifty-four. And again, if we were to build an office building, which does not require a special use permit at seventy thousand square feet, that's one hundred and one AM peak hour, one hundred and five PM peak hour and a thousand forty-two for total daily trips. So to summarize, we're zone C seventeen which allows for higher density uses. Our Spokane River District promotes residential urban-scale higher densities. Riverstone infrastructure accommodates our proposed development as confirmed by city staff. We are proud to really deliver a high-quality project on one of the last remaining undeveloped lots in Riverstone. With this design and this use that allows to provide very generous landscaping and setbacks, our proposed apartment will have dramatically less traffic demands than office and that's circling all the way back to where we're very excited finding a use and design that allows it to be economically viable, but demands less on traffic and parking. And we're giving it our best effort here and we have not come up with another scenario or solution or option that would generate, to be economically viable, that would generate less traffic and less parking than what is proposed. And to summarize, we hope this project will add to the vibrancy and continued success of Riverstone and Coeur d'Alene community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Have some questions for Ryan? Okay, you'll have a chance to come back later.
Maybe a question for Ryan or staff that I see some inconsistency. They've identified Riverstone and John Loop as arterials, but our staff have identified them as local streets. Is that just immaterial or is...
No, so there was a misunderstanding. So it sounded like the applicant team initially thought that they were arterials, didn't realize there was different designations. So we did notify them after checking on kind of the, what are the classifications of those rows with KMPO and so they have corrected that. But as Ryan in his presentation showed you, the two arterials in proximity are Seltice and Northwest Boulevard.
Okay. So the findings don't change in the...
So the other two are just considered local streets.
Okay. The findings don't change in terms of proximity to arterials and the sufficient width of the streets, correct?
Right. You don't have to be on an arterial, you have to be in close proximity.
Proximity, okay. Thanks.
Okay, Ryan, we'll come back. The first person I have on our sign-up sheet is Mary Jo Krings. Come on back. I do have to swear you in one more time.
I can handle that, thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I swear to tell the whole truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey. I have great respect for Parkwood Properties. They do build a beautiful building. I mean, honestly, it's great. I've rented from them. I love their buildings. Problem I have with this particular development is this building's a behemoth. It is five stories tall. If you drive on that street and try to look at a forest view beyond this building at five stories, it will be obstructed, absolutely obstructed. And the other commercial properties on that same street have been very ethical in terms of limiting their height. And I wonder if the people that live in the Riverstone area recognize how much of an obstruction they're going to get to this view. I own property in Bella Reve. My HOA submitted a letter to me to say that there's going to be some problems here and I paid attention to that letter. I don't think many of the other people in my neighborhood did, but I'm concerned about the traffic impact, but mostly I'm concerned about the view. Secondarily, so if it was a three-story building, I think it would be a beautiful addition to the area, but as a five-story building, I think it's too tall. With respect to just another comment, we've been encouraged to come here and give comments as the public, but I'm noticing that it seems like the voting here is done as a voting block. And I think that, I would hope that there's some independent thinking that goes on, but I'm not feeling real encouraged to come back. It does seem to me as though you're kind of rubber stamping this. And going on with that theory, I'm not really suspecting there's a lot of due diligence being applied to what's being claimed here. It seems as though the city planning department are advocates for these projects and I'm sure that these, the developers are very ethical and these people they've hired for these studies are really giving us the full story, but honestly, there's due diligence that's required to make sure that we're getting it right. I'm not feeling confident that that's happening. Those are my comments.
Mary Jo, I'd like to comment on that. It is important that you speak and we do hear what you say, but we also have to sit here and weigh both sides. You know, there's always someone that wants an approval and someone that doesn't want approval. So we have to take all that information in, but you are heard and it's very important that the general public come up and speak so we get that input. Unfortunately, sometimes a decision is made differently than someone would like that outcome to be.
I understand that completely and I'm not used to being agreed with, but what I'm telling you is this, there was zoning in this neighborhood for a reason and all the other... other building applicants have agreed with that zoning. And in my opinion, if you want to deviate from that zoning, you have to put forth a really good idea and a darn good reason. I happen to know enough that I think that a further commercial development in this area would not be a good idea, so I personally think that residential use would be a good idea. On the other hand, this building is huge, and I think that deserves consideration.
Okay. Well, let's see where this goes. But thank you, appreciate it. Karen Hansen is opposed and does not want to speak.
There was a lot of us...
I'm sorry, if you want to say something, come up to the podium, please. And Karen, I'll just have to swear you in. Just state your name.
Karen Hansen.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead, Karen.
So I feel the same way that this lady that just spoke. Can you tell us how many people signed that paper that were opposed?
Sure.
As opposed...
This one, you want to know how many people?
The second one, you know, the one that you were just voting on.
The second one was about the same amount of people, and I'll count it for you. I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. 12 spaces on a page, and the last page, there's probably 10 people. And even though there might have been 10 or 12 people to sign up, and there have been many, many hearings we have where I've had multiple pages of this, people, as yourself indicated, did not want to speak, and that's why I call out the names so people can come up afterwards and change their mind. But a lot of people signed this up and do not wish to speak, and whether they're opposed or not opposed. So the public is always invited to speak, we're always here to listen. So go ahead.
But they did oppose. How many, I was asking how many people opposed the one you just voted on?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I read it when...
Isn't that something that you take a look at in consideration?
I have one of these each time, and on here it says opposed, and that's why I read out, saying they're in favor or not in favor. The commissioners hear that, and then, as you saw before, we go into discussion, and sometimes we approve something, like we did the last one, because of the reasoning, and that's why I've always asked for discussion. And again, sometimes that discussion isn't agreeable to everyone, so we do the best we can here with the information we have, and that's how this procedure goes.
Okay, well, I feel the same way that she was just talking about, that we're not being heard, we're showing up to these meetings, and from what I heard, most of those people that signed that were opposed. And yet you still went ahead and passed the last one, and it sounds like you're thinking about passing this one, too, and I'm just like, why are we showing up?
I don't know where this one's going to go yet. But again, if, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just because someone says it's, they marked it being opposed, doesn't necessarily mean we're not listening to you. But we might not, in your interpretation, or the people who are opposed to this, might interpret it as we're not hearing you, but we do. But we have to weigh that information, just like you make any decision when you go and do something. Some people might not make the same decision you do, but you weigh why you're making that decision, and that's what we have to do here. We weigh the information, regardless of how many people say they're opposed, or how many people say they're in favor of it.
So it's regardless of how many people are opposed in the community?
It's not regardless. Maybe I misquoted myself. It isn't that we're not listening to you, or when we have a mark that says opposed, and I read it, we take that into consideration. But we have to make a decision on what's best for the community, what's best for that particular project. And that's why we always have discussion. And as you heard on the last hearing we had, the discussion we had, and why the commissioners voted yes on it. I'm not saying you should agree with it, but that's how we have to look at that. And sometimes we say no. And I have no idea yet. If you want to be patient enough to wait in the audience and see where this goes, then you'll find out.
Okay.
I'm sorry if you feel you're not being heard, but you are being heard. It might not be what you like.
I guess I'm not seeing the big picture of what your criteria is that you're taking into consideration. And like she stated, what due diligence have you done on the past situation and the situation before us?
Okay.
What due diligence have each one of you done?
I've spoken my piece. One at a time, if someone wants to make a comment.
Commissioner Luttrell.
Go ahead.
Maybe you take some time later on to see what, we go through a process. I don't make motions here because the process is too complex for me. But it says different parts of the comprehensive plan that we believe this proposal meets or doesn't meet. So that's our due process. We rely on the staff to give us information, and I believe the staff is impartial. I don't believe they support the development, they support the city code. We've had people come before us where the planning department has advised them not to come, that they are, this is not going to be effective. And they come anyway. And I'm sure that there's, the staff is, I believe, impartial. And this is, I worked in the city for a long time, and it's one of the things that you don't want to do when you're a city bureaucrat, is be partial to one side of the, you want to make sure you get everything. Now, I don't necessarily count how many people are for or against it, but what I do count, what I do listen to, is their comments. And maybe 500 people say the traffic is too bad, and, okay, so the traffic's bad. Then I have to weigh that in my mind, our comprehensive plan and so forth, whether that traffic is so bad that I would vote against an item. So, and I think it's in each, us individually, look at what is presented to us, what testimony we get, look at our charge to the comprehensive plan, and make independent decisions. Sometimes we do it unanimously, sometimes we don't. And, but that's the way we try. And we're here not because we're elected, because we want to be part of the community like you are. Thank you.
And each one of the people that gave testimony here, they said that they didn't want it, and that it was going to block views, and it was going to block the sun, and, you know, they gave all sorts of different reasons, and yet you guys still voted it to be good. And so when I asked the question, what kind of due diligence have each one of you done, you kind of looked at me like, you don't have any answer, and passed it off.
Hold on, one at a time. Hold on a time, one at a time, please.
That there's no rules on sun blockage.
Okay.
See, that's the issue there.
Yeah, and this is kind of getting out of the realm of our public hearing right now. I'll let it go for one more minute.
I'm done.
Okay, all right. But I will let the commissioners respond a little bit to what you said. I'll give it one more minute, and then we'll proceed with the hearing as it is. Go ahead.
I would say, I, we do follow a process, and we're provided with criteria that needs to be met that's based on city code. And so when we make motions and we cite findings, that's based on certain zoning requirements and certain findings by the city staff. So there's a number of data points, but our job, I mean, in fact, we got kind of penalized in the press around 10 inches because we couldn't, we couldn't match the findings. And we don't always agree, but there is a process. We get a big packet, we get data points from the city, we get data points from the public, we get data points from the applicants, and we get data points during the public hearing, and we weigh those. But our responsibility is to make the findings that are based on objective criteria. And I think sometimes it's straightforward, and sometimes it's not. And I'm thankful for that, because I think otherwise I'd probably go on the whims of purely the public opinion, and I don't think that that's my responsibility entirely. I think it's to incorporate public hearings and public comment into a number of data points. So I hope that we can instill confidence in the process, but there are some, there's quite a bit of due diligence that we do, that the staff does, and there's quite a bit of process that is reflected in our decisions.
Any other commissioners have a comment? Karen, if you don't have anything else to say on this...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Karen Schumer is opposed and did not indicate. You want to come on up? Karen, just state your name, and I'll swear you in.
Karen Schomer.
Schomer, I'm sorry. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I concur with both of the last two people who have spoken. I'm not very comfortable coming up here and speaking, even though I'm opposed, and varying off has maybe gotten me off track of what I wanted to say originally, but we're novices out here. We don't understand the zones, we don't understand the R-34s, we don't understand, you know, we're novices. So we're trying to learn, and we're trying to figure it out as we go. Evidently, you all are experts at this, and so even though people oppose, they should still, that should weigh on you, even though they don't want to come up and talk, because they have feelings. As far as the presentation that I just saw, I built on the river in Riverstone, and I've been to all the meetings that surround Riverstone, and we just went through this a few months ago with the other proposal of the, I think it was 800 units. The traffic is horrible. If you live in Riverstone and you have to drive in and out of Riverstone every day, if you take advantage of the Riverstone benefits of the Starbucks, the restaurants, the shopping, the traffic and the parking is horrible there. You have to walk quite a distance to get to where you want to go, and getting in and out of there is very difficult. As far as his comparisons to what's already there at Riverstone, I think this proposal is a beautiful building. I agree with Mary Jo as far as their architecture, and the pictures he showed us of the other buildings are all very beautiful. But a five-story building is too tall, and he compared it to the other large, tall buildings in Riverstone. He didn't compare it to any of the smaller buildings. And being right next to Anthony's, being right next to the lake there, people like to walk around there, and they like to see the beauty of the surrounding area, and this building is too tall for that. I appreciate that he's got 34 apartments rather than 56 or whatever the number was, but it's still, it's too much for Riverstone. Riverstone is bursting at the seams right now with the traffic and losing the beauty of what Riverstone was supposed to be. And I'm just disappointed that we have to go through this all over again. That's it.
All right, Karen, I just want to comment on your comment. As far as a lot of the audience is not understanding R-34, I totally agree with you on that, but it's sometimes during the presentation, I believe, and Hillary, maybe you can correct me, we try to do a comparison up there, saying what's appropriate, not appropriate, but what the owner has by right, this is the parking spaces and the height. We try to have that, and this is what they're, they are proposing, and this is what that change might be. So we try to explain that on the screen. I tried to ask that question during the comment period with the applicant. So, yes, I understand, it's a very, sometime...
Complex.
... cumbersome thing to come up here, and people do get nervous. I invite them to come up, we're all friendly here. We want your input, and input's important. So what I do, thank you for your time.
But people aren't comfortable coming up. They oppose, but they still aren't comfortable coming up.
I understand that, and that's why I read them, and hopefully, like you did, you changed your mind, you want to come up. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Terry Gloubout, and he does want to speak. Is he here, or did Terry go?
Yeah, Terry.
Oh, maybe he signed up on the wrong sheet. Joette Katzer is opposed and does not want to speak. Kurt Katzer is opposed and does not want to speak.
I'll speak.
Okay, come on up. Just state your name, and I'll swear you in.
Kurt Katzer.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
Initially, I'd like to thank the council for their hard work. I am a resident in Riverstone area. A couple things, I do think this, it is a good-looking building. I think it's, it is, like everyone else thinks, it's a little too tall for the area that it's going to be in on the pond. Secondly, traffic on that Riverstone Drive is, it feels like it's getting worse daily, and we really have to keep this, I'm not sure what we're going to do. We have a lot of vehicles that are short-cutting that Northwest Boulevard, Southeast Corner, and then we're going to bring Atlas online. Suzanne's going to bring all those people into Riverstone. So I think we need to keep that in mind. And the other, I have a question for you. When these developments are residential in nature, are we including the schools in the planning process? And are these, since we're, they come to us at times and say, we're maxed out, so are we including them in the conversation?
Okay. Well, let me answer that question. It's not that we don't include them, but that's kind of not really our, and maybe staff can address this, not that we don't consider it, it's something that has just recently come up in a lot of our...
Seems like it has.
Yeah, and the school also has to do their diligence to acquire, and this is my personal opinion, not the commission, they have to acquire land because more land on a more consistent basis, and not just wait until they're so maxed out.
Sure.
Only because they just can't say, hey, we can't have development because we can't have our children in the school, because, let's say, this particular project, we don't know how many children are going to be in there.
No.
So it's kind of tough, but I feel the school has to, you know, I think, change their way of thinking in the past, and saying, this area is growing, we're going to have more children. They have to be a little bit more proactive on acquiring land and maybe banking it, if they can.
Sure.
I'm not sure they can. But it's not that we don't, and it's not that we do, but it's a little gray area. Unless, Hillary, you want to add on to that factor, please?
Sure. So the school does get notified of all of these projects. We didn't receive comments from them for either of the projects that are on tonight's agenda. We have been working with them cooperatively, we're meeting with them on a regular basis, talking to them about, letting them know what developments coming forward so that they can kind of expect, okay, what areas do we need to be looking at for future school sites? We've also suggested that they go to the state or legislators and try and get some impact fees for schools. Our state does not allow that, so that's an area that I think would help them greatly. There's been discussions on some projects, why we can't ask for school site dedication. That's also not legal unless there's some kind of just compensation for that. So it's tricky, and staff and the commission and council all understand the burdens of the school district, but we do, we are trying to make sure that we're working with them as closely as we can. But it is kind of, even though it's a public service, it's not something that the city can govern, so it is up to the district to do those things.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Elaine Price, you do wish to speak? Just state your name, and I'll swear you in.
Elaine Price.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
So first of all, I want to tell you guys that I really appreciate that kind of change in what I've seen from previous meetings I've come to, hearing more of you being concerned about what the citizens are saying and how we feel. I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think that we need to look at growth as not controlled but managed. I've been here for 28 years. I know things are changing, and they have to change. The developers, they want to maximize their profits, and I think it's the city's responsibility to think about the streets and although I understand, and thank you for the clarification on the schools, that, you know, we hear about these two projects are going to, they've both mentioned Winton Elementary School, and you think about that as, and granted, I don't have any children in school right now, but you think about those people who have children, and what is that going to impact them, and the school, and stuff like that. So I always thought, when I moved here, that the city had boundaries, and it wasn't going to get too big. I never imagined that we were going to go up, never in my wildest dreams did I think this city was going to go up. So I want you guys to think about that. Is R-34 really the solution to our growth? You know, is that, is going up, is that going to take away the reason why people moved here? You know, hearing people say that they don't come visit anymore because of the growth, it's just things that we need to think about, and when we manage the city, that's what we need to do. And when we manage the city, that's what we need to think about. And I just wanted to mention, because the affordable housing has come up. I know, I have people that live in a city that restaurants have to close when somebody calls in sick because they don't have enough housing for the employees. I don't want Coeur d'Alene to be that way. I've worked in retail, I've worked in restaurants. And I know how hard it is to find a place to live. And those people have to have places to live. So that's something that we need to think about when these places are going in is, are they building more places that are expensive? That are kids, my kids can't even find a place to live in Coeur d'Alene anymore. And they have to move away. And I don't want that for my kids. And we need to think about that stuff. So that's all I have to say.
Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Donnell is.
I'll speak.
Oh, you want to speak?
Brian Donnell.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-yog?
I do.
Go right ahead.
One, I do want to thank you guys, whether we agree, disagree. I mean, you guys go through and you got a lot more detail than we got a lot of the times we come in. And just have the attitude of, we don't want growth. Been there, done that. I moved here twenty-five years ago from a city where I would never, I haven't even visited to show my kids. I want a place where I, my kids, my kids range from seven to twenty-one. And I do fear that what Coeur d'Alene's becoming is a lot of where I came from. And I don't, I'm personally thinking about moving my kids out of the area because I don't want my grandkids to have what I had. So I come with that concern, but I do understand. I came here, there's going to be growth. I don't say I don't want anybody here, but I want the right type of growth. Unfortunately, yeah, I think this is big, but I also kind of heard a little bit ultimatum. If we don't build a apartment complex of this size, we'll put twice the size of a commercial building, which is going to have worse impact on the community. I believe Riverstone was more developed as a commercial. That's why it's, you know, seventeen, you know, with no restrictions. So as much as I wouldn't want a big facility, this is probably better than what it could be. I do not understand why we don't have an impact fee on our developers to help with our roads, which I was at the meeting for the congestion around Riverstone, which is a problem now. And we're going to add more problems as more buildings are being built there. You know, but those are the problems we have throughout town. I live over by Costco. And my residential street is used as a cut-through because congestion is so high on Fourth Street. You know, so I, again, I do thank you and I think you guys put time in. I do understand where people are saying, well, there's all these opposed. Well, if they're opposed just because we don't want growth, we're just checking opposed, your voice doesn't need to be heard. You know, if you got a justified reason, then speak it. If you don't, you know, that's, I believe there's lots of people that are for it that didn't show because why show up? They're for it and you guys are going to do what you guys are going to do. So, but I do, I do have the concern on the congestion, which was discussed at that traffic meeting. I also, you know, this requires, one of the things is, is around schools, again, and I understand. But saying, you know, to have this zoning or this, I guess it's not zoning, it's a.
Special request.
Yeah, special request, that it's near a school. Well, if the school's overcrowded, you know, we're trying to say, okay, well, it's near a school. Well, the tough thing is applying that as a school when they have no room. So the kids are going to either have to be bused or the other kids that are a little bit further out that are already going to that school are going to be bused to another school. So I just, I just want those things taken consideration. You know, I do agree that there's a lot of people that don't come here anymore. And seeing what Coeur d'Alene is becoming, it's not a bad place. But I do see it going down the road to being something where a lot of us wouldn't like to live. The last thing though, I wanted to comment on your statement of the little parcels around by Kootenai where those buildings are that are, this was from the last little thing about them selling and all that. You know, you got to look back though, why are they selling? Are they selling because they absolutely don't like their house and they want a nicer house? Or are they selling because they're being pushed out by all the development? So all these people that have been in these homes for twenty, thirty years that like their home, but they're being pushed out because of the overcrowding of development and commercial around them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John Williams is in favor, does not want to speak, okay. Bill and Maureen Farrar oppose and do not want to speak.
I'd like to speak.
Okay. I take it you're Bill.
I'm Bill, I'm not Maureen.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-yog?
I do.
Go ahead, Bill.
And thank you for the time tonight and thank you for the work that the commission does. My wife and I are fairly new to Coeur d'Alene. We've only lived here a couple of years. We own down on Bellerave. And I will tell you that we have fallen in love with Coeur d'Alene, plan to live here the rest of our lives. And as such, we take very great pride and very great care of what happens here. But understand that we, like many of the people in the audience, are very much like the bridegroom that marries the bride. You meet her, you fall in love with her because you don't want her to change. You want her to be the way she is for the rest of her life. That's not realistic. She's going to change, she's going to grow, just as we are. What we have seen in the last couple of years though, is increased traffic on the ninety, increased traffic on Northwest, increased traffic on Seltice, and therefore increased traffic on Riverstone Drive. It has become increasingly difficult for us to walk from our residence across Riverstone Drive to go over to Main Street. It's becoming more difficult to pull out in our car. It's becoming more difficult to pull in on.
Iron.
Ironwood, Ironwood, I think. And pull into the complex down there. And with the addition of the hotel, with the addition of this, which is, I have to say Parkwood's put a lot of thought into this. It's a beautiful building. They have a good plan in many ways. But we also heard the veiled, well, we could do worse and it could be worse. And we're proposing only twenty-seven units when we could go up to thirty-four units. So that's a little concerning. What I'm suggesting is that with the increased traffic that we've seen that other people have talked about, what I heard was a traffic study of what this would add to it, some three-hundred-and-fifty cars a day or trips a day. What I'm not hearing is a larger scope of study. How much more traffic is on Seltice? How much more traffic is on Northwest Boulevard? How many people are using Riverstone Drive? I haven't heard current counts of where that is and where this is going to go. And I'm suggesting that perhaps a decision tonight might be premature. And I would ask you to give consideration to that. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last person on my sign-up sheet unless someone else has changed their mind and wants to speak. If not, Ryan, you can come up and address some of the verbal comments you heard.
Thank you neighbors and general public. Growth is hard. We are developers where we are in the business of making money versus losing money. And this is where it gets difficult in that we purchased a property in Riverstone at a price that requires higher density. And with higher density, that requires more parking, taller buildings. And to identify a project that's economically viable, it just has to be a more dense project. Coming up with a solution, and by the way, thank you so much for the compliments on the design of our project. That means a lot to us because we care about the community. I'm fourth generation Coeur d'Alene and my two boys are fifth generation. We're going to plan on living here a long time and so it's important to us to do the right projects for this community. And when we purchase this, it just requires a higher density. And one is, we could have avoided this tonight and the public comments and just go, and this is maybe an education for some of the public that don't understand the entire process. By right with our C seventeen zoning, and sorry, I wish I could look at you. By right with our C seventeen zoning, we do not have to go in front of the planning commission. We do not have to go in front of city council. We may proceed forward with a ten-story office building with three parking decks generating two-thousand daily traffic trips a day that we have the right to do. And the reason why we're going through this process, asking for approval through a use, that's a special use permit, is because we are listening to the public that are concerned about traffic. And this is our best solution where this really reduces the impact to traffic. With the building height, yes, I'm sorry, it's five stories and not three stories, but that's where it gets into the economic viability of our project. This was purchased, there will be a development here and it needs to be of higher intensity. And this is our best, and we really feel this is our very best approach to doing the best we can effort-wise on minimizing traffic impacts, parking, and still yet it being economically viable. Thank you.
Ryan, I got a question.
Oh, sure.
I can't tell on a little eight-and-a-half by eleven sheet. How wide is each building? And how far does it set back from the current walking path that's there?
We haven't measured the walking path. That's a very good question. We can only figure out the property line. So that distance between the edge of asphalt walking path to our building, we weren't able to identify that.
Approximately, you, I mean, you have a, I believe there's a.
So I can get to the site plan, which I'm happy to do here.
There's a figure on there, I just can't see it. I'm not saying that's defined. Yeah, I.
So just to help out, from here.
Yeah, that to there.
Commissioner Messina to here, that's that fifty feet from here to here.
Okay.
From here to here, Commissioner Messina, that's fifty-seven feet. And those are the only two measurements here, but if that helps, that's fifty feet and this is fifty-seven.
So fifty feet back approximately, give or take a few feet here or there. And then the width of, I guess, each building or the total building, I can't, again.
So when I did this, I think it was, hold on, I've got the packet, but I think I can do this off memory. We're roughly two-hundred feet in width and so if you look at this.
Because on one plan.
There's on one plan, I have the physical copies in a folder if you want me to grab that, but it seemed like.
I'm just trying to get some input so we have a better visual of the length and the setback from the.
So the length of the building, I think there's a measurement on the site plan. I can pull it, but I believe from this corner to the middle, it was roughly a hundred feet. And then from the middle to the corner, another hundred feet. And so roughly it's two-hundred feet or less. And width-wise, I have in my mind.
Well, I'm not so concerned about the depth.
Okay.
We know what the height. I wanted to get a feel for the length and the proximity from the pond, the walking path.
And for example, the Pinkerton Building and, let me get to this.
Anthony's?
I don't know about Anthony's, but we did kind of a rough measurement from the Kootenai County website where you can do that measurement tool.
Yeah.
And we had Hampton Inn in Suites at, that might have been closer to three-hundred feet in length. And Pinkerton Building might have been two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So we tested a few others and they're a little bit wider and longer than our proposed project.
Proximity is the same distance from the pond or the walking path.
And I think our building might be set back a little bit farther than, I wish we had an aerial to measure that. But I believe the Pinkerton Building and Anthony's probably is a little bit closer to the pond than us. We were very strategic and we want to set that back a ways. So we're kind of proud of a minimum fifty feet.
As far as that picture shows there, you have that, I guess, just grass area in the front and.
So this is probably the best 3D rendering where, this is where from our property line back is that fifty feet. And there is a man-made stream that runs between Anthony's and us that we're very excited to be right next to this, that flows right into the lake or the pond. And, you know, this is just a rendering, but it's going to be grass, it's going to be great landscaping. It's going to look really, really nice. And to have this site at thirty-nine percent landscaping, we're proud of that. That's tough to accomplish. That's very tough to accomplish.
Okay, Chairman. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, by the way. Question if I could, but first I'll make a comment that I believe the building is beautiful. And a number of us agree with that. However, even though it's beautiful, that's not a finding. If it wasn't so beautiful, that's really off the table, you know? I'm glad it is beautiful. But, you know, we have to, we're trying to make the point here tonight that really our findings tonight have to do with, you know, cohesion with the comp plan. And that really comes down to, as you pointed out, you know, the comp plan talks about and envisions in the Spokane River corridor, pockets of denser housing. Someone said, well, this isn't what Riverstone was meant to be. I remember back to SRM's kind of aerial artist rendition of Riverstone. If you ever saw those exhibits, they had towers far taller than this in there. Do you recall seeing those?
Yes, even a picture from a developer that had a twenty-seven-story office building right where McDonald's is located.
So that said, but, so the findings are really going to come down, it really come down to cohesion with the comp plan, compatibility with surrounding properties and whether the infrastructure utilities support it. It really comes down to that. But even though the beauty of the building is off the table, but just the same, it's good. Question on the schools, and that's not a finding either. But I'll ask you anyway, just for, not that I'm going to make a decision on it, but what's your demographic in there? I, that doesn't look like a big kid generator.
That is our assumption. We're studying that now. We've got a feasibility report ongoing right now. But these units range from six-hundred square feet to nine-hundred to a thousand square feet. So these are one bedrooms and some two bedrooms. The top floor might be a little bit larger units. But based on kind of the market race that we're thinking, it's probably not as much family-oriented as.
Empty nester kind of stuff.
Retirees could be, you know, they don't want to own a condo, they don't want to own a second home. They want to be here for six months out of the year. So in terms of demands on the school, we feel like it's not a great, strong demand. And based on the unit sizes and mix, probably isn't going to have a lot of families in there. We will welcome families, but just based on the unit size and mix, probably not.
Thank you.
One of the big concerns of this, and it is my concern, and we've, you know, gone overboard on the praise. Now I'm going to tackle it. Have you looked at lowering at least the outside fringe so that there are more open views? Because I do recognize that as you drive on, you won't see the pond except maybe a shotgun view beside Anthony's through the parking lot. And so you really have obliterated that view. If this building were on the opposite side of the street, up against the hill bank, no problem. But this one is a barrier. And that was our big concern with the last development down further. Atlas is just these walls of apartments that you would never see the river. And now we're going to never see the pond. And I think the traffic is addressed. I think people just have to learn to drive slower. They're not going to book down that Riverstone Drive. And I'm in and out of there almost every day. And it's nothing compared to other cities and other places in parts of this town. I mean, Ramsey Road, take it any day, you know, you can have it. So yes, there's congestion there, but I think that this choice is good. I just wish it were lower and a little less bulked up on. I just wish it were lower and a little less bulked up on that one view. If you had looked at stacking it slightly different, really, or tearing it down on the sides, just so it wasn't such an edifice.
I certainly understand the concerns, and we've tried three-story and four-story and narrower. And this is the one that got us to the point where it's economically feasible. That being said, we will certainly listen to those comments and how can we address this in any other way. But I can, just to be very honest, the width that we needed and the shape allowed this to be economically viable, yet still have a setback of 50 feet and still have a lot of landscaping and still allow enough parking to park this. And so we really did try and study, and that's why it's shaped the way that it is. But I do understand, it is nice that next door, Anthony's, is lower, set lower, and it is a wider lot that probably allows a little bit more views into there, but I do understand that the building is a wider building.
What else? Guys? No? Okay, Ryan. Oh, go ahead, Peter.
You had a schematic up there a while back about, showed all the properties and the roads and so forth, with the openness, how much, right, that one right there. John, you'd mentioned something about some schematics you saw when they first started this. And I haven't, because I was not here then, but I was here when there was a cement manufacturer there and when there was a sawmill. And it looks like there's still a lot of open space here. And we have up north there towards Seltice, you've got apartment houses and so forth. For fear of being thrown out, I want to claim that Riverstone is a success. You said it started in 2005. I don't know when you bought the property, but that was 14 years ago. So it takes a period of time of incubation to get where we're at, to where you're at, where we're at, where the city's at. Granted, if you moved in earlier, you're gonna, you have more open space, you had more freedom of movement, let's say. But that's just part of what happens when we grow. And there's gonna be more growth in that area, and there's gonna be more growth down the river. So I, and comparing this R-34 to the one we had before us, which I supported that one, and I'll support this one, that's just a different environment. It seems that this is a better, is a more appropriate, not better, more appropriate environment for this type of R-34. So I do support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Fleming, may I address one more? You had a question. The width of it? It would be great if we could narrow it up and add a story and create views, but we're maxed at 63 feet. So that was another challenge we ran up against.
What about getting rid of some of that covered parking and shoving it, elongating it so you can drop down those sides? I do this for a living, so I do it every day. I mean, you know, it's a way to skin a cat. I just, I just feel like this is just too much of a bulky element that is just impermeable. And so I'm not convinced that there isn't a better way to do this. I just, I see it, I see it in other cities, I see it other places, that you teardrop it down and you feather it off at the side and just be able at least to see the hill on the other side of the river. Right now, you will not see the hill on the other side of the river. So that's just my feeling of this building. But, I mean, yes, it's beautifully done, no question. But I just wish it weren't as bulky.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close public testimony on this particular item and bring it to the commission to have further discussion and hopefully a motion.
I'd start with some discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree with my commissioner to my right that, you know, R-34 in this location, I think is even, is a better fit than the previous project. And again, you know, we're, we need to look at the findings. We have specific findings having to do with the comp plan, design and compatibility of the site, and whether, you know, utilities and infrastructure are there. And I think, I think it's well-supported.
My comment is, yes, the design is very attractive, very attractive. Whether or not if this isn't approved, I'm not sure how it's gonna go. But if the other option is to put a taller building in there at C-17 and go up as high as you can and maximize the square footage of the lot, I don't know if that's an economically feasible project either, given the commercial situation in this town with as much commercial as there is in office space. So again, you know, you can make that presentation, but whether or not that is ever going to happen on that piece of property, whether this gets approved or if it doesn't get approved, I'm not sure about that. With that, I'll give it over to some other commissioners to make some comments.
I was, I was kind of going through all the various by rights, what's allowed under the C-17 zoning. And, you know, there is a lot that can be done, and it was pointed out that, and I don't think it was necessarily designed to be an ultimatum, but I believe that if that were the case, then it falls on us to try to do the right thing. And are we going to avoid this tonight and allow something to cause bigger and greater problems down the road by avoiding it tonight? I think the comments made by the developer for the traffic impact, really minimizing, what I've seen, and we have copies of the JUB traffic studies attached to our packets, you know, you can definitely see the engineering, the analysis done by the engineers that were retained for this service. You can certainly see that there should not be the kind of massive impact if we were to just stay with C-17 and allow whatever goes up to go up. So I am in favor of seeing this go through because of that, maybe not necessarily the fear, but what could happen if we don't do anything about this tonight properly and then think about our future and think about what we can do to continue to see that area develop properly. You see a lot of larger buildings, and I think Commissioner Ingles made that comment, that the other buildings that are already on site, all the larger, bulkier, office-style, commercial-style buildings that do exist, this is somewhat compatible to all of those other buildings, and it's in an area that was kind of destined to be that type of development to begin with, way back in the beginning, so. As for the traffic and then the site obstructions, I started to think about, you know, what, who's really looking that direction from the other side of the building? And that would be along Riverstone Drive. And if you're looking at the river and the pond and you're driving, I don't know if that's a smart thing, a safe thing to do, but, you know, that's really the only portion of that property that is going to be obscured as far as sight, the way I see it. So, but, you know, on the flip side, whoever ends up on the fifth floor, they're gonna have fabulous views. So, I mean, there's two sides to that view coin, so, anyway.
And you, let's have to remember, Riverstone, as it was planned to be developed, live, work, and play, it's come to that, that's what it is. And the traffic in there, yes, it's generated by the people that live there, but I would have to say majority of the traffic in that area are people who are enjoying what's there as far as the services, the movie theater. I mean, yeah, I've been there after the movie theater, you get out, and yeah, there's a lot of traffic. And perhaps some of the buildings, you know, might, should've been in a different location here or there, but the fact of the matter is, traffic isn't just the residents. It's everyone that's come into that place to enjoy what it has become.
Right. And a certain percentage, I think it is attributable to those that are shortcutting Northwest Boulevard, Seltice, that intersection. But I believe that, that's just, again, that's my opinion, but I'm sure the traffic studies would probably demonstrate that that does have an effect until all the rest of the alignment and then the intersections are redesigned. And I think we saw, we've seen some studies onto that effect as to what can and should be done for, down the road. So I think those concepts are in place, it's just a matter of seeing it all come through so that Riverstone can avoid that massive congestion that I know that does happen, because that is, that is fact, it does get busy down there for sure.
Yeah, and I'd like to hear what you feel on this. You have an opinion?
Yeah, I think I, yeah, I think some of my comments would be consistent with the earlier decision in terms of finding opportunities where we can, where density makes sense. I think, to echo Commissioner Ingles and Luther, this actually does seem more compatible with the surroundings. I think the commitment to landscaping and style and design, I appreciate. Riverstone, as I read it, and the Spokane River is intended to be mixed-use, and I think this serves that purpose, so I would support it. And I think, just to comment, I do, I do listen and take very seriously the comments from the public, and I understand some of the concerns about traffic and parking in other situations. But I think the data bears out that this may not have a dramatic impact on that relative to other potential projects in the area, and just in absolute terms, too. So I think I'm trying to separate what we all feel in terms of traffic versus what actually the numbers suggest.
If we have no further discussion, I would like someone to make a motion. Lynn?
This one.
Michael? Deanna? Peter? John? Anyone?
My favorite time of the meeting.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you.
Certainly. This matter having come before the planning commission on April 9th, 2019, I'm sorry, this is in, this is the Coeur d'Alene Planning and Zoning Commission's finding an order for SP-2-19. This matter having come before the planning commission on April 9th, 2019, and there being present a person requesting approval of said item, SP-2-19, an R-34 density increase special use permit in the C-17 zoning district. The applicant is Glacier 1940 Riverstone LLC, and the location is a 2.4-acre parcel located at 1940 Riverstone Drive within the Riverstone Development. I would recommend that we adopt the findings listed in front of us, items B1 through B7. And moving on to item B8 pursuant to section 1709220, the special use permit criteria, special use permit may be approved if only the proposal conforms to all the following criteria to the satisfaction of the planning commission. So finding B8A, the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan as follows, and there is a list of objectives that takes up two whole pages, but in particular, I want to point out objective 1.12, titled Community Design. Tammy was able to produce that and show us during her presentation, speaking to community design, supporting the enhancement of existing urbanized area and discouraging sprawl. Objective 1.14, the efficiency, promoting the efficient use of existing infrastructure thereby reducing impacts to undeveloped areas. And I want to point out objective 3.02, manage growth, coordinate planning efforts with our neighboring cities in Cootney County, emphasizing connectivity in open spaces. Moving on to finding B8B, the design and planning of this site is compatible with the location setting and existing uses on adjacent properties based on the project itself fits the surrounding areas. As we talked about it, it is within that Riverstone development area, and consequently, there's other properties and development similar. Finding B8C, that the location, design, and size of the proposal are such that the development will be adequately served by the existing streets, public facilities, and services, and it's based on the numerous reports that we see from the various city department leads and managers, specifically the water and sewer and street departments and so forth, the fire department. There are, however, some special conditions applied, and there are four of those. I won't read them, but they are conditions that the Parks Department, wastewater, and the engineering building have placed on this special use request. So the planning commission pursuant to the affirmation finds that Glacier 1940 Riverstone LLC, for a special use permit as described in the application, should be approved.
I have a first, Ward, you need a second?
Second.
Is that by Ingles? A second by Ingles. Roll call, Shannon?
Fleming.
Can you lead me to the end?
Ingles?
Yes.
Mandell?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Okay. SP-2-19, passes. If we have no further comments or discussion, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make that motion. I would like to note that you do not have your hat on, and you look just as handsome with it off as you did with it on. And congratulations, Mr. Chairman, with that move for adjournment.
Second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you, and good night, everyone.